Good evening. This is a regular city commission meeting for the city of Largo for Tuesday, September 15th, 2020. I'd like to call this meeting to order and we're going to start, I believe, with an invocation given by Pastor Mike Dukes from Judah First Christian Ministries. We have had a little bit of audio issues. We're going to give Pastor Dukes a second and see if he can join us. It looks like we'll re-invite Pastor Dukes to come back and we'll figure out the audio for next time. We'll move forward with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its good republic, for which it stands one education for God and the personal role that it has to play.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is a proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month, and Julian Perez is going to be presenting that.
Whereas during National Hispanic Heritage Month, the city of Largo recognizes the contributions made by Hispanic and Latino Americans and celebrates their contributions stemming from our earliest days, which include naming the state of Florida and introducing the important resources of cattle and oranges to the economy. And whereas Latinos comprise 11.3% of the city's population, the second largest and one of the fastest growing ethnic groups in the city, and that which represents a diversity of cultures and heritage, and whereas Hispanic Americans have had a profound and positive influence in our community through their commitment to family, faith, hard work, and community service, they have shaped our national character with centuries-old traditions that reflect the customs of their proud history. And whereas Hispanic Americans continue to embody the pioneering spirit of the United States, starting over 4.5 million Latino-owned businesses that contribute more than $700 billion to the US economy every year, and whereas Hispanic Americans have worked to overcome many challenges, often in the face of discrimination and prejudice, and have successfully embraced the opportunities of the American dream. Now therefore, I, Woody Brown, Mayor of the city of Largo, Florida, and on behalf of the city commission, to hereby proclaim the month of September 15th through October 15th, 2020, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Largo, in conjunction with the celebration of National Hispanic Heritage Month, and in honor of this year's theme, Hispanics, be proud of your past, embrace the future.
Thank you and good evening. Happy Hispanic Heritage Month. My name is Julian Perez, and I am the Community Engagement Administrator here at the city of Largo. Hispanic Heritage Month, also referred to as Latinx Heritage Month, recognizes the rich history of communities with cultural ties across many countries, including indigenous communities. Proclamations like that of this evening are part of our community engagement and community recognition efforts that we work on throughout the year. As we celebrate this month, community members can look out for educational campaigns through our social media, Facebook, and other communication channels that highlight the resources and local events featuring Hispanic and Latinx heritage. The National Park Service and PBS.org are two great resources that provide educational materials to celebrate national and local histories during this month. Now I'd like to introduce the community honoree recognized to accept this year's proclamation. He's our very own Victor Otero, who is a librarian at Largo Public Library and has a focus on community outreach. Victor works to advance efforts to support and recognize this population through a bilingual podcast at the library, helps to curate and share Latinx and Hispanic book titles throughout the year, and also attends community resource fairs when possible to share library resources in the community such as our English as a Second Language classes, citizen support, English tutoring, among other efforts. Victor, you bring such a positive energy and passion to this work and are a true asset to the community and the city, so I will pass it to Victor to share some words with us this evening.
Hi. Thank you for having me as we celebrate the culture and contributions of citizens of Hispanic origin. Like Julian said, my name is Victor Otero, and I am the Community Engagement Librarian at Largo Library. And I am honored that the city of Largo is recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month, that the Hispanic population in the US continues to grow, and this growth has made libraries get involved more than ever to better serve the communities that serve them. I am very proud that the city of Largo and Largo Library have a strong track record of serving Hispanic communities, and we continue to show our efforts of growing the Spanish language collection, diversifying the regular collection, and offering English classes and providing resources for those that need them the most. I am incredibly honored that we are developing strong and lasting relationships with the communities that we serve, and as we see the positive outcome of having Hispanics not only represented but also celebrated.
Thank you, Victor, and thank you, Julian. Our next item is a proclamation declaring October 2nd, 2020, Manufacturing Day.
Whereas, city of Largo, Florida recognizes the importance of manufacturing to our regional, state, and global economy, and whereas manufacturing represents 5.39% of the state's GDP, as evidenced by the more than 12,000 manufacturers employing over 372,000 Floridians, or 4.23% of the state's total workforce, paying on average $68,337 salary per employee. And whereas manufacturing is a desirable targeted industry in Pinellas County, representing $10.5 billion in total sales, $7.5 billion in exports, and over 44,000 employees positively contributing to the economy throughout the community. And whereas manufacturing is a significant creator of jobs and prosperity in Largo, with 145 manufacturing companies employing in excess of 1,700 employees, making a wide variety of products from medical equipment and supplies to pharmaceuticals, cleaning compounds, boats, and electrical equipment. And whereas manufacturers support the community's tax base in order to help fund important city services, infrastructure, provide outstanding employment opportunities with both high wages and great benefits, make investments into buildings and the workforce, and provide essential goods, allowing them to be an economic development driver in the community. And whereas the ability to successfully address short-term and long-term workforce development relies upon expanding a positive perception of the manufacturing industry as a career choice, and whereas the city of Largo routinely sees the positive contributions of our local manufacturers and appreciates and thanks them for their continued commitment to the communities and clientele they serve, and now therefore, I, Woody Brown, Mayor of the city of Largo, Florida, and on behalf of the city commission, to hereby proclaim October 2nd, 2020, the first Friday of October, as Manufacturing Day, and we urge all residents to join us in recognizing the critical role manufacturing plays in our regional, state, and global economy.
Thank you, Diane. Good evening, honorable city commissioners. National Manufacturing Day is observed annually on the first Friday of October, and this special day was created to bring awareness to common misconceptions about manufacturing and to provide manufacturers an opportunity to connect future generations, take charge of the public image of manufacturing, and to ensure the ongoing prosperity of the whole industry. This year, the Central Pinellas Chamber of Commerce is promoting Manufacturing Day to help inspire careers in manufacturing. Manufacturing is a significant creator of jobs and prosperity in Largo and Pinellas County. The Chamber, manufacturing partners, and the city of Largo desire to bring more awareness to this essential industry. The manufacturing industry in Pinellas County employs over 44,000 people and provides good jobs and good benefits. Although this year's celebration will be virtual, the goal is to grow this annual event to reach more students and encourage them to enter the industry. And since we are meeting virtually, earlier today, the Chamber joined Mayor Brown and staff to accept the proclamation and for a photo opportunity. For more information about the Chamber, you can visit centralchamber.biz. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next is a proclamation supporting October as National Cybersecurity Awareness Month.
I guess their computers crashed.
Sorry, I was having technical difficulty there. Good evening. Yeah, I believe we're going to read the proclamation. She might be on mute.
No, I'm here. Okay. Whereas, the city of Largo recognizes that it has a vital role in identifying, protecting its citizens from and responding to cybersecurity threats that may have significant impact to our individual and collective safety and privacy, and whereas critical infrastructure sectors are increasingly reliant on information systems and technology to support financial services, energy, telecommunications, transportation, utilities, healthcare, and emergency response systems, and whereas cybersecurity, education, and awareness is crucial for everyone, including large corporations, small businesses, financial institutions, schools, government agencies, the home user, and anyone who connects to the internet. And whereas monitoring your accounts, being conscious of what you share online, keeping computer software up to date, creating unique passwords and changing them regularly, installing antivirus programs and firewalls, and using mobile devices safely are ways you can protect yourself from phishing, viruses, malware, and loss of sensitive data. And whereas maintaining the security of cyberspace is a shared responsibility in which each of us has a critical role to play, and awareness of computer security essentials will improve the security of city of Largo's information, infrastructure, and economy. Now therefore, I, Woody Brown, Mayor of the city of Largo, Florida, and on behalf of the city commission, to hereby proclaim that the city of Largo is officially supporting National Cybersecurity Awareness Month in the city of Largo, and encouraging all citizens to learn about cybersecurity and to put that knowledge into practice in their homes, schools, workplaces, and businesses.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Each year, the month of October is recognized as National Cybersecurity Awareness Month. Cybersecurity awareness plays a huge role in protecting our city and nation's infrastructure. The city of Largo's new cybersecurity awareness and training program went into effect May 1st of this year, and has subsequently played a significant role in heightening employee awareness, identifying further training opportunities, and preparing for the transition to Microsoft 365 and Teams, beginning the first quarter of fiscal year 21. Proclamation by the mayor affirms the city's support and commitment to help raise cybersecurity awareness.
Thank you. And just as a reminder, if you got an email telling you that I need all your information, it's probably not true. So thank you for those tests that IT has been sending out.
If you click on that email, you get to redo the test.
Exactly. You're right. Next up is Employees of the Quarter.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'm here to present the winners of the Employee of the Quarter. Our first winner is Tim Clark, IT Technical Specialist in the IT Department. Tim has always gone above and beyond for the fire department, but on Friday, July 17th, Tim took the extra step. A fire department uses telestaff for personnel scheduling and tracking purposes. One of our district fire chiefs was not able to pull the report that is crucial for day-to-day scheduling. I spent several hours over a few days working with the vendor and trying to find the solution with no luck. As I became increasingly frustrated, Tim stepped in and stepped up. Although unfamiliar with the inner workings of the software, Tim asked me to duplicate my profile in the software and went to work with the vendor to find a solution. It took some time, but Tim's patience prevailed, and he was able to find the problem and fix it. We are grateful to have Tim Clark assist the fire department. This is just one of the examples of how he has gone above and beyond for us. The amount of time he spent on this issue was truly appreciated. Congratulations, Tim. Next up, we have Edward Slaney, Trades Worker 2 for the Public Works Department. I wanted to share with you how Ed has exhibited integrity, collaboration, and passion for the city of Largo. At the end of his day, Ed was driving past a disabled vehicle on the way back to the PW complex. He stopped to see if he could help the elderly lady who looked tired and frustrated. She informed Ed that OnStar was en route and that she'd been waiting a while, and she wasn't sure when they were coming. Ed brought his city vehicle back to the office, brought his city vehicle back to the office, got into his personal vehicle, and went back to see if the lady was okay. He brought her a bottle of cold water and waited with her until OnStar arrived. He knew that it was getting late and that it could be scary and lonely for an elderly female to wait on a busy street for help. I feel that he displayed the kind of integrity and compassion that represents the best of the city of Largo. Congratulations, Ed. Next up, we have Alicia Grazioso, Recreation Leader 1 for the Recreation, Parks, and Art Department. At the beginning of the summer, Alicia transitioned to become our new preschool teacher at Southwest Rec. She was tasked with starting the preschool from scratch, and has excelled in building the program over the past few months. Her passion for the preschool is apparent to anyone who visits her classroom. You are immediately greeted with smiles and laughter when you walk through the door. She is always engaged with the children and goes above and beyond to ensure each child feels special and appreciated. She plans activities that the children love and are excited to participate in. She has worked very hard to keep up with VPK standards to be sure that the children are learning each day. Alicia has worked hard to learn all of the rules and regulations to be sure that she is in compliance with the licensing board. She is patient, not only with the children, but with other staff members working with her. She takes time to teach new staff the proper procedures and does so with a smile and positive attitude. At her young age, Alicia has shown so much maturity and responsibility in her new role. She keeps open lines of communication with the parents, and they all respect and adore her. After summer camp ended, Alicia had several parents decide to keep their child at Southwest Program for the school year because they were so pleased with how she runs her program. Since starting with the city of Largo, Alicia has held several roles and continues to excel at each one. She is a major asset to the Southwest team, and we are very lucky to have her. Congratulations, Alicia. Last but not least, we have Matthew Williams, Police Officer for the Largo Police Department. Officer Williams is the recruiter and training coordinator for Largo PD. Officer Williams has worked tirelessly during the last quarter to run multiple hiring processes, basic recruit classes, and annual in-service training, all during the COVID-19 pandemic. Officer Williams was faced with many obstacles to accomplish these tasks, and he did so with ingenuity, collaboration with other city departments, and good old-fashioned hard work. Officer Williams always maintained a positive attitude when dealing with many unforeseen challenges and setbacks, which is a credit to his dedication and passion to this agency and the city of Largo. As a result, Officer Williams has been able to get the Largo Police Department fully staffed during a time when serving your community as a law enforcement officer is not looked upon favorably, and during a worldwide pandemic. Being fully staffed is something our department has not seen in quite some time, so being able to accomplish this speaks in volumes as to the commitment of Officer Williams. Officer Williams also continues to organize and instruct top-notch training for new hires, as evidenced by numerous words of praise in reference to the training program from the new hires, many of which have law enforcement officer experience. In terms of teamwork, Officer Williams is someone I have come to rely upon and count on daily. There have been numerous instances over the past four months where Officer Williams dropped what he was doing to assist me with my assigned tasks. He has done so without hesitation and with incredible energy, and I can honestly say Officer Williams had an instrumental hand in the successful Kalia reaccreditation our agency just went through. I have not been the only one who has benefited from Officer Williams' team-first attitude, and his willingness to help is infectious in his other coworkers, which has created a strong teamwork environment. With all this being said, I humbly request your acceptance for this nomination and select Officer Williams as Employee of the Quarter. Congratulations, Officer Williams.
Thank you, and congratulations to all of the employees of the quarter. We'll now move on to citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens' comment this evening?
I have one email that came in under publiccomment@Largo.com. It was previously distributed to the commission. It's from Donna McPherson. She writes, "Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Proposal to move to fine-free approach to library borrowing services. I disagree with the proposal for the reasons stated below. The city of Largo needs these funds. The pandemic has reduced the city of Largo's annual income for 2020. Let's not toss this income away. I do not understand this description," and this is a quote, "A fine-free library borrowing is going to make a positive impact on patrons who thought their library privileges were permanently revoked, and would send a strong message of inclusion and support for marginalized populations. If a patron thought their library privileges were revoked and wanted to again use the library services, couldn't this be done on a case-by-case basis? There was a reason a library card was revoked in the first place. It should be discussed. What kind of messages the library is sending? It looks like no accountability is okay. That's not right or fair to all the patrons who take pride in never having a fine. Those patrons followed all the rules. These are the patrons who should receive additional privileges, not those who broke the rules and lost their privileges. The city of Largo has a bookmobile to reach patrons of underserved areas of the community, and also a program that allows housebound members to borrow books with contact-free delivery of materials. The housebound currently have a no late fines policy. Does that mean they can keep the material as long as they want? That's not fair. Someone could be waiting for that material." It does state that charges will accrue for lost or damaged items. These programs are in place to meet the needs of the marginalized populations in underserved areas. The city does not need an additional program for these areas. It is a privilege to use the library, something to be proud of. Let's keep it that way. Please vote against this agenda item.
Mayor, you're muted.
Thank you. I was asking if there's any other public comment from Zoom or anywhere else. Seeing none, before I move on to approval of the agenda, I meant to mention earlier that Commissioner Fenger is not with us this evening, so there's six of us here tonight. Next is approval of tonight's agenda.
I'd like to pull 11 and 12, and...
I'll pull 14.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pulling 11, 12, and item number 14.
Move approval.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Next is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of September 1st, 2020.
Move approval.
Motion and a second. Any changes or corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0. And then approval of the minutes from the special meeting of September 3rd, 2020.
So moved. Second.
Are there any changes or corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Could I hear the consent docket, please?
Item 8, Appointment of Sally Smith as a member of the Code Enforcement Board. Item 9, Reappointment of Robert J. Healy Jr. and Reappointment of Paul Wallace as Members of the Police Officers and Firefighters Retirement Plan Board of Trustees for two-year terms beginning October 1st, 2020, and expiring September 30th, 2022. Item 10, Authorization to Settle the Sewer Damage Claim for 2463 Aleria Avenue in the estimated amount of $85,501. Item 13, Authorization to Purchase Various Information Technology, Wiring and Cabling Services for Fiscal Year 2021 from Comco Communication Installation and Service Company Incorporated in accordance with Florida Department of Management Services, Suncom, in the estimated amount of $100,000. Item 15, Authorization to Purchase Centronet Telephone Voice Services for Fiscal Year 2021 from the State of Florida Department of Management Services in the estimated amount of $100,000 for the period of October 1st, 2020 through September 30th, 2021. Item 16, Authorization to Purchase Playground Equipment for the Highland Recreation Complex from Rep Services Incorporated utilizing Manatee County School Board bid #16-0025 in the estimated amount of $380,000.
Thank you. You've heard the consent docket. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent docket. That commission discussion is outlined in the commission packets.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Holmes, a second from Vice Mayor Holt. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0. I'd like to take this minute. I'm sure that Sally Smith, Robert J. Healy Jr., and Paul Wallace are probably all watching from home right now, so I'd like to thank them for volunteering to serve on one of our important boards. Item number 11, please.
11. Mike, good evening.
How are you, sir?
Okay. We can kill two birds with one stone here, 11 and 12. Because if you read 11, this is Authorization to Purchase Cellular Services and Data Wireless Services from Verizon Wireless for Fiscal Year 2021, okay? And if you read 12, Authorization to Purchase Cellular Voice and Data Services from AT&amp;T Mobility for Fiscal Year 2021. Now, I know, reading this thing, we're getting divorced from AT&amp;T, and we're going to go strictly with Verizon, the way this thing reads. Is that correct?
We're moving in that direction. We don't have a plan to move the non-smartphones yet. The flip phones, the lot of places people use in the field, we don't have a plan to move those away from AT&amp;T yet, but we're moving smartphones away from AT&amp;T. It's a better deal with Verizon.
Okay, because when I kept reading through this thing and I'm going, well, okay, the city expects to continue the transition through 2021. Current breakdown of cellular voice coverage by carriers is approximately 70% AT&amp;T and 30% Verizon, so you've already got that through. Okay. Another one, I was going to ask you on item 12, they're charging six cents per minute on a call, and it didn't say here whether Verizon was going to be charging by the minute itself. I didn't see it in here.
Yeah, they are not charging by the minute. That's why it's so much a better deal. Not only is it 39 as opposed to 48.95, but they're not charging the seven cents, and people have run up a bill of $150 before just by talking a lot on the AT&amp;T smartphones. So we're saving a lot of money with Verizon, and they're also giving us better coverage, and they're going to put us on their priority public safety network at no cost. It's an extra cost.
So you figure then by the end of next year, the end of fiscal year 21, you should be away from AT&amp;T and all the way on with Verizon then?
I think we'll have most of our, most if not all of our smartphones away from them. I'm not sure about the flip phones yet. We haven't discussed that yet. The regular old... The regular old phones where there's no monthly cost and you just pay a flat amount of minutes, they may stay with AT&amp;T, or we may move them over too. We haven't made that decision yet. But the amount of phones will just keep moving over toward Verizon as we go through the year.
How many flip phones do we still have?
That... I think we have a couple hundred. I can't tell you for sure. I could get back to you with that.
Really?
You have a good number.
When it comes to this stuff, I'm a dinosaur, and even I don't have a flip phone.
Yeah.
Maybe I missed some here.
Yeah, people just need the waste coverage down the field.
Wow. Okay, you answered my question. I'll give you a motion unless someone else wants to talk about flip phones. Now, look at that. It was wide open, and nobody took the bait. I move to approve the purchase...
What is that?
Huh?
What is that?
I move to approve the purchase of cellular voice and data wireless services from Verizon Wireless in the estimated amount of $190,000 for fiscal year 2021 in accordance with the Florida State Contract Number DMS-10/11-008C. That's item 11.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Item number 12.
Okay, all of you want to make a crack about item 12, be my guest. I've had my answer. I've got the answer.
Anybody?
Seeing none. I move to approve... I move to approve the purchase of cellular voice and data services from AT&amp;T Mobility in accordance with State Contract Number DMS-10/11-008A in the estimated amount of $70,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Item number 14.
14's an easy one. I was looking at the budgetary. Why are we taking money out of wastewater funds for spectrum video?
Okay. It's not video. Wastewater pays for a portion of the circuit that goes out to wastewater. Essentially, we use spectrum leased lines to connect our network out to the Environmental Services Plant, and we lease that internet circuit. It's a private circuit that it just extends out there instead of using fiber, which we couldn't pull all the way. And they pay for part of that circuit that comes back to City Hall. It's for data connecting to our network.
So actually, then, just for that one circuit, we're paying $11,200 just for that?
Yeah, it's a little more than that, actually. We're paying for part of it because Southwest also connects to it back here at City Hall. We have two sites that are too far away to connect via fiber, and we connect it via leased line with Spectrum.
Really?
Yes, sir.
I tell you, with all the wiring going on around Pinellas County, that's quite a surprise.
We've been looking for an option for a while. Haven't found one.
I guess wireless won't work, then?
No, it's a little too far.
Really?
Yeah.
I have no other questions, then.
All right, any other questions?
I move to approve the purchase of cable TV and internet services from Spectrum, Inc., in the estimated amount of $112,000 for fiscal year 2021.
Second.
A motion from Commissioner Holmes, a second from Commissioner Carroll. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Next up is item number 17.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a second reading amending the Comprehensive Development Code, Chapter 14, Affordable Housing. There have been no changes since first reading. It was approved by Planning Board 5-0 on August 6, 2020, and it was approved by City Commission on First Reading 7-0 on September 1st, 2020. Staff is available for questions.
Ordinance Number 2020-41, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending the City of Largo Comprehensive Development Code by amending Sections 14.1.2, Definition of Affordable Housing Development, and by amending Section 14.1.3, amending the minimum criteria for the Affordable Housing Development Designation in the Community Redevelopment Districts, Special Area Plans, and Community Development Block Grant Target Areas, providing for applicability, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on this item?
Checking, and I see none.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions from the commission?
I move to adopt Ordinance Number 2020-41 on second and final reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Thank you. Next is item number 18.
Okay, good evening, everyone. This is the second and final reading of Ordinance 2018-66, which will establish the property tax rate for fiscal year 2021. Clear my screen really quickly. It doesn't look like it's sharing. There we go. Okay. Okay. State law requires the adoption of a tax rate prior to the adoption of the annual budget to ensure that the proper revenue is generated to fund the budget presented to the City Commission. On September 3rd, at a special meeting, the City Commission approved the rate of 5.62 mils by a vote of 5 to 2. That rate was noticed as a tax increase along with the final annual budget on Sunday, September 13th, in the Tampa Bay Times. Since that time, we have not received any additional public comments. Just a quick overview of the tax rate this evening. It does represent a 6.96% official tax increase, which is less than the total property value increase of 8.19%, thanks to value added from new construction and annexation efforts. The total general fund revenue increase is 8.2% over the current year and helps provide the needed revenue to work towards the city's strategic priorities and fund balance goals. This rate, along with several other potential rates, were included in your packet, and all of these do require a supermajority vote of the City Commission. So the impacts of the rates that are provided tonight are also summarized in the slide here. All of the analysis here works off of that property value increase of 8.19% and 0.3% value increase for the homes listed properties due to the new construction and annexation. The total value increase of 8.19% brings the value of 1 mil up to approximately $85,000 over the current year at $5.3 million per mil. The total impact in the general fund of that value increase, when leaving the rate the same at 5.62 mils, is $2.2 million. The alternative rate of 5.6 mils affects a $2.1 million revenue increase, so that difference is approximately $100,000. And the second column in the slide shows the impact of these rates on selected properties. One, in the average single-family home, that annual impact is $19 increase at the current rate and $17 increase at the rate of 5.6 mils. On an average small business in Largo, the annual impact is $171 at the current rate, while $98 at 5.6 mils. Then finally, on that large commercial property, you can see that the difference between the two rates is approximately $187 annually, although in either scenario, the total tax bill is nearly $4,000. So this chart provides a visual to aid in your decision-making tonight. As you can see, we have been drawing down fund balance, which was initially done to help the city weather the impacts of the current known COVID-19 financial fallout. And then we are working to rebuild that fund balance toward the target of 20%, although you can see we don't reach that 20% goal in the current planning window. I did not create a separate slide for the 5.6 rate since that revenue impact is only $100,000, then, less than the 5.62 mils, which is approximately 1/10 of percent of fund balance. That concludes my presentation on the tax rate, and that recommended rate remains the same tonight at 5.62 mils, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ordinance Number 2020-48, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, establishing the property tax rate for the City of Largo for the fiscal year commencing October 1st, 2020, and ending September 30th, 2021, at 5.6200 mils, 6.96% higher than the rollback rate of 5.2545 mils, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments?
I have no public comments.
Do we have any questions from the commission? Commissioner Holmes.
Thank you. You know what this reminds me of? I mean, I've got my trim notice right in my hand. Well, a couple of them here. And if you stick with the 5.62, my property tax actually increases $16. So you say, big deal, with $16. Well, how much was it last time? Another $16. And the time before that? Another... I think another one, I think was bigger than that a couple of years ago. My only objection to this thing is we're cooking the frog. As you keep adding a few dollars here and a few dollars there, we say, this doesn't look like much. There are some folks out there that's gonna, it's gonna make a difference to them. One of the things that's really, it's almost, it's pathetically comical, and we had the discussion about the sewer rate, which that is a user fee. That's not a tax. You'd almost think Armageddon was here. We heard from all kinds of people. Not today. We're talking about the property tax, and there's been no comment on it, which I really find that it's surprising. But anyway, that's enough from me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Carroll.
I would just sort of echo what Commissioner Holmes said. You know, I was looking through the newspaper. You remember the newspaper? And after I hung up my flip phone, and I saw all the property tax public notices in the paper, I went about my normal routine, talking to my neighbors, talking to people at Publix and Ace Hardware and around town. I got not one comment about the property tax rate at all. So armed with that information, when we get ready to take a motion, I'll be prepared to give you one for 5.62. I think we're doing a lot of great things in this city. I think we're sticking to our strategic plan. I see opportunities in the future, although nobody's ever gonna believe it, that if we get to where we want to be, we could look at a mileage rate reduction. But at this point in time, I'll be supporting 5.62.
Thank you. Any other comments? I bought a newspaper on Sunday. I was surprised to see there was like six crossword puzzles in it because they only come out twice a week, so... Any other questions or comments? I'm just gonna point out, I think that I proposed a 5.6 rate. I think that's... And the reason I did is just to give a little bit of a break on the tax rate itself. It still is aligned with our plan as far as the increase in revenue each year from year over year and the plan moving forward as well. I understand the desire to move quickly or as fast as we can towards a 20% revenue and still keep with that plan, so I'm okay with, I guess, the majority here. But I do think that we could accomplish that, albeit just a little bit slower, at a slightly lower rate, and that's why I suggested that, so... There's no other comments or questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adopt Ordinance Number 2020-48, establishing the property tax rate for fiscal year 2021 at 5.6200 mils on second and final reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes 5-1.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is item number 19.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Commission. This is Resolution 2279, adopting a final budget for fiscal year 2021. First, we'd just like to start out thanking the Mayor and the City Commission for your policy direction in guiding the development of this budget, and thank the city's executive leadership team and their staff for all the work that went into putting together department budgets and priorities that will advance the city closer to the goals identified by the community and the commission. The budget development process is very much a year-round, ongoing process, beginning with capital planning in the fall and culminating with this full operating and capital improvements budget before you tonight. Priorities and strategic direction were first developed last winter at the City Commission Retreat. Following the release of the City Manager's proposed budget on July 1st, city staff held five digital community feedback and engagement meetings over the course of this summer. There were also additional public meetings as outlined here, the City Commission and Finance Advisory Board Work Session on July 10, subsequent Finance Advisory Board Meeting, and the City Commission Work Session on August 11th as well. We also reviewed and discussed this budget at the September 3rd tentative budget hearing. Next slide, please. So included in this budget, we have some page references for some of the strategic focus areas, but in the City Manager's Budget Message, you'll find a number of the highlighted strategic investments for this year, and just want to touch again on those in this presentation here. In the area of sustainability, we're continuing our investment in technology modernization as well as competitive compensation investments for employees to make sure that we're able to recruit and retain talent, investing in our infrastructure, including our stormwater and wastewater systems, and continuing to improve our organizational approach to sustainability with the Phase 1 of the Largo Environmental Action Plan update. In the area of public health and safety, we'll be adding three police officers this year as part of the Public Safety Staffing Plan, making investments targeted at firefighter safety and health and wellness improvements. We'll continue our investments in smart asset management in our infrastructure, including our roads, buildings, and various other infrastructure that we maintain and construct. And we'll be making investments in making sure things like our playgrounds and recreation facilities are updated, maintained, and replaced where needed. Finally, in the area of community pride, these are those amenities that our residents take pride in and make Largo the community of choice, and that includes investments in the Central Park Performing Arts Center, signage and aesthetic upgrades around the community, the replacement of the Central Park Railroad Building, and trying again at the Central Park 25th Anniversary Celebration in this coming year. We would encourage everyone to read through the City Manager's Budget Message on largo.com to learn more about what's included in the budget. One other change I'd just like to point out since the first reading that we forgot to mention is just a net-zero FTE position classification change. It didn't have a financial impact, which was why it was accidentally left off the reconciliation list. But other than that, there have been no changes since the first reading of the budget.
Resolution Number 2279, a resolution of the City of Largo, Florida, adopting a final annual operating and capital improvements budget for the City of Largo for the fiscal year commencing October 1st, 2020, and ending September 30th, 2021, providing an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on this item?
I have no public comments.
Questions, comments from the commission? Commissioner Carroll.
Yeah, just a comment. Thanks to everybody that worked so hard on putting this together, the Finance Advisory Board, all the people, all the directors that had input, but especially you guys who are here tonight that brought us to the final product. It's easy to read. It's well done. It's in line with all of our strategic plan and our goals and objectives, and it's just very, very nice to see the way you've done it. Thank you.
Why don't you make a motion, then, John?
Well, I wanted to say that I appreciate I let Commissioner Carroll go first because I was gonna say the exact same thing. So thank you to everybody for a job well done.
All right, you had your chance.
We're gonna take a couple of months off and then start on next year.
Go ahead, John.
Get out of front of all that.
And all that, thank you as always, Mayor, and your team.
I move to approve Resolution number 2279, adopting the final budget for fiscal year 2021.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Thank you, next up is item number 20.
Ralph, you ready?
Yes, I am. Good evening, Mayor and City Commission. This item is to award contract number 19-B-659, West Bay Drive, Pinellas Trail Gateway Project to David Nelson Construction Company, in the amount of $2,197,21.55. On June 15th of 2020, the city advertised this project for a competitive bid. The city received one bid response on the deadline of July 15th, 2020. City staff worked with DOT to evaluate this bid, and has determined that David Nelson Construction Company is a responsive and responsible bidder. The bid includes a base bid, alternate one, and alternate two. The city is recommending we award the base bid and alternate one, and include a contingency of $200,000, uh, in the award amount. A gateway feature such as a monument sign or tower will be considered once the financial impacts of COVID-19 are better known. The FDOT LAB grant for the amount of $1,192,606 will be used to reimburse the project after submitting monthly invoices. David Nelson Construction is FDOT pre-qualified and has performed similar work for the city, and has done satisfactory work. David Nelson Construction possesses the ability and the resources to perform the services required for this contract. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you, do we have any public comments on this?
I have no public comments.
Commissioner Holmes, do you have a question?
Yeah, um, I'm always troubled when we only have one bid, is there any idea why nobody else bid on this thing?
Yes, so, part of the bid analysis that I completed for DOT was to evaluate why we only received one bid. City staff bid out this project about a year ago with the same result, one bid. Because the project had a tower component, it was very unique, um, there wasn't too many qualified contractors, uh, but also reaching out to all the people that purchased the bids, uh, it was determined that the project wasn't big enough to, to be beneficial for a lot of the contractors that you worked in Pinellas County.
Well, my second thing, and I don't think the people can see this, this is the sheet that we received. I can't possibly read this thing, I think it's two-point type or three-point type. Is there, is it possible to get, maybe you could post a bigger copy of this thing, I can't read it, I had a magnifying glass on, I could hardly read this thing. I don't think the camera can see it, it's so small. What actually, what is, what actually is this second sheet?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
What is this? I, I don't think the people at home can see this thing, but that's the type.
So, that, that sheet that you're holding up, Commissioner Holmes, is the bid tab, that's all the line items for the project. It also has a column with the engineer's estimate, unit prices and total cost, and the last two columns would be, uh, David Nelson's unit cost and total cost bid for the project.
Okay.
Yeah, on the, on the digital copy of that, it wa, it was possible to zoom in enough to, to make out the numbers and the, and the line items. Um, I, I'd like to just make a comment about the item, or the option one and option two, I, I think that the real benefit of this project is, is not necessarily the tower and the, the monument sign, I think the real benefit is the increase and the, the better connection to the trail for the Medical Arts District and the neighborhoods around there, and West Bay Drive, and, and improving that whole kind of system. Down the road, if it becomes, um, super down the road, I wasn't on purpose, um, if it becomes really, a, a really popular connection, then we could consider, uh, doing something that denotes the connection a little bit more, uh, so I'm, I'm all for kind of cutting out that tower thing to make it a little bit more affordable at this point.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Ralph, um, I, I understa, I agree with the mayor as far as, uh, the towers and, and, and I guess the monument sign that is being removed in the project, but is there still gonna be any type of, um, signage at all denoting that you are coming into Largo? Because this is a quote-unquote gateway project, so, um, it's a gateway to, what? I mean, I understand what it's for, because I've sat on here and for the last couple of years and, and discussed this project, but, I mean, I think it's kind of, if we're not gonna have any type of signage, and, and, you know, if we are, then fantastic, but.
So there, there is no signage part of the award, uh, all signage is part of alternate two, which was the construction of the towers and signage. We'll take a look at options, once we have a better understanding of impacts of COVID, uh, to construct those towers or something a little bit smaller that, that complements the, the plaza that just got recently completed. Um, I do understand that, that is a component in, in identifying Largo and, and it's definitely not off the table, but at this point in time, you know, we want to see where we stand with COVID.
No, and I understand that, oh, go ahead, sorry, Henry.
No, I, I, I just wanted to add in real quick, yeah, just add to what Ralph said is that, yeah, well, we've talked on the staff level is that rather than having those, those towers, we need to have a, um, a more modest monument sign on either, either side of, of the trail, and, and that's something we'll be, we'll be evaluating and probably bringing back to you at a later day, and we will try to mimic some of that, that look that we have at, at the downtown plaza for the Largo sign.
So, and that's, I, I appreciate that, um, explanation from both you guys, so, um, and so at the end of the day, um, the project is going to be rehabilitating the overpass, correct, as well as, are we still doing, uh, the one-way street on, is that 13th there or 12th? And, um, and then, you know, the other connections along the trail to the, to the neighborhoods back there, I mean, all of that, the, the big crux of this project is still going on?
Yes, uh, so part of the base bid is constructing all the connectivity to the Medical Arts District, the neighborhoods, and, uh, commercial area to the, to the east. It also includes constructing the one-way parking on 12th Avenue or 12th Street, and then alternate one is, uh, sandblasting and repairing the overpass with some minor structural enhancements.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carroll?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, Mayor, I agree with your comments, the thing, um, we're improving the function of this and the safety features associated with it, it'll get a, uh, a new look to it, but it's one of those projects that, um, is kind of sitting out there for a while, and it's when you have, um, a design team, you know, design something, and then somebody has to take a look at the cost of construction, certainly over a, a number of years, um, we kind of designed ourselves out of our budget. But, um, I really appreciate the work as far as improving the, the pedestrian and other multimodal tra, traffic safety around there. And as other, other development, redevelopment takes place a little further east, it might lead us to design some sort of a, you know, a waypoint there, some kind of signage or whatever that, that, uh, we, we can't envision yet until we see what's gonna be behind it on the horizon.
I had a question about, um, the, the neighborhood connections, I, I'm not sure what road, there's one that's already complete a little bit farther to the north, uh, that was done as part of a different project, um, but I wanted to know how many are gonna be done, how many connections like that, I know there's one at the end of Washington, I believe, um, and then one just to the north of the McDonald's, how many, how many neighborhood connections like that are gonna be done as part of this project?
So the one that has been constructed is on Fourth Avenue Northwest, there will be a similar one constructed for Washington. Uh, and there's a smaller connection on Pine Vista, which is on the west-north side of the trail, and then the one by the Medical Arts District is at grade, so it's a crosswalk that cro, that passes, crosses 12th, at 12th Street, and then connects to, to the trail down.
And so is that gonna go, um, um, along with, or at the end of the road that goes in front, I don't know what road it is, but the one that goes in front of the Diagnostic Clinic, is that gonna kind of dead-end to this, into this, um, crosswalk or at-grade connection to the trail?
Yes.
That's where it's gonna be?
Yes.
Okay. Good. Commissioner Carroll?
Yeah, I had one other question, and maybe I just missed it, but, um, how does the timing line up with this, Ralph, is, is in, uh, with regard to what the county plans to do to West Bay Drive? We're not gonna have conflicting projects, are we?
No, um, I do not have a schedule for construction for this project yet, um, as soon as we receive the award, I'll be coordinating with the contractor to get a schedule. Um, I believe the county's portion of the project is still in design phase, so it's a couple of years out, so there won't be any conflict.
I ju, I just know that we talked about a pedestrian mid-block crossing there, some other, um, things like that, and I wondered if anything we're doing will be undone when they come down with their equipment. But no, you don't think so?
No.
Okay.
Commissioner Smith?
Uh, Ralph, memory service, uh, David Nelson is the one doing downtown, correct? And, uh, Rosary?
Right.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions?
I move to approve award of contract number 19-B-659, West Bay Drive, Pinellas Trail Gateway Project, to David Nelson Construction Company, in the amount of $2,197,021.55.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0. At this point, I will recess the commission meeting to convene the CRA meeting for two items, the first is item number 21.
Good evening, Honorable Members of the Community Redevelopment Agency Board, this item is for the adoption of the West Bay Drive Community Redevelopment District Fiscal Year 2021 Budget. Florida statute requires that the Community Redevelopment Agency, which is considered a special district, to adopt an annual budget by resolution. Approval of this budget fulfills that statutory requirement. The CRA's budget is consistent with the adopted fiscal year 2021 City of Largo annual budget, and the West Bay Drive CRD program is included within the Economic Development Division of the Community Development Department Budget. Therefore, adoption of this budget has no new budgetary impact. The proposed expenditures for fiscal year 2021 are $2,896,700. Staff are available and happy to answer any questions.
Resolution number CRA-20-03, a resolution of the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Largo, Florida, adopting an annual operating and capital improvements budget for the City of Largo West Bay Drive Community Redevelopment Agency for the fiscal year commencing October 1st, 2020, and ending September 30th, 2021, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, do we have any public comment on this?
I have no public comment.
I just had one question, I think I know the answer to it, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. In the intergover, for, as far as revenue for 2021 in the intergovernmental section, it has, uh, one, $1.3 million roughly, um, can you tell us where that comes from? I know all of that does not come from the county, is that correct?
That's, that's correct, uh, some of that is the county shared, uh, tax increment financing, and then also, uh, for the, uh, for the trailhead project, uh, that was, uh, moved back, moved to FY '21, that's the FDOT, uh, LAB grant.
Okay, thank you, about what is the number for the, um, the county's contribution to the TIF in 2021?
For 2021, that county contribution is $685,000, uh, $685,300.
Thank you.
And the, uh, the FDOT, uh, trailhead, uh, grant is, uh, $657,300.
Thank you, any other questions?
I move to approve Resolution number CRA-20-03.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0, item number 22.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners. The purpose of this agenda item is to request approval of the Community Redevelopment Agency Board's preferred ranking for proposals for the redevelopment of 511 Cleveland Avenue Southwest, and for authorization to enter into negotiations. This property was originally foreclosed by the city. The property was transferred to the CRA by the city on November 19th, 2019, and the CRA reimbursed the city for legal costs related to the foreclosure and to pay outstanding property taxes. The transfer was made to enable the sale for residential infill purposes, to prove the market, and to meet the goals of the West Bay Drive Community Redevelopment District Plan for the City Home Character District. This character district serves as the transition between the high-density mixed-use corridor districts and the lower-density residential neighborhoods found in the neighborhood residential character district. This character district is intended for limited live-work uses, multifamily and single-family homes, and new single-family homes are required to be at least two feet, two stories. On July 9th and July 12th, the CRA posted advertisements in the Largo Leader and the Tampa Bay Times announcing the request for proposals to purchase and construct a single-family residence on the 511 Cleveland property. The minimum qualifications for the project were a minimum bid of $24,000, a two-story single-family home with the elements compatible with the design standards for the City Home Character District designation, and for this home would, that would be tr, neo-traditional design, a functional front porch, a pitched roof, and rear access parking with, access would be from Second Avenue Southwest. The proposals needed to include a letter of intent explaining what would be built on the site, the purchase price offered, and a financial document showing the bidder had the ability to purchase and construct the project. The CRA received four proposals before the RFP closed on Monday, August 31st at 4:00 PM. And the selection review committee was made up of staff from the Finance Department and Community Development Department to review the proposals and rank, to rank them. And the committee ranked the proposals as follows. For number one, the proposal from Mr. Thomas Favaro with Favaro Homes, and his proposal is to build a two-story home with neo-traditional design elements with a functional front porch, a pitched roof, and rear access parking, and the purchase price offered was $30,000. The second-ranked proposal was from Mr. Lorian Tripp, uh, for home, for home in the neo-traditional and modern design, and he offered $27,500. And the third proposal was from Mr. Don Fleg with Dynamic Property Services, Inc., and that was for a 2,000-square-foot single-family home with two stories and parking in the rear. Uh, he offered images of the neo-traditional design home with the front porch and the pitched roof, and his offer was for $25,000. And the last proposal was from Mr. Bill Nunamaker, and he contacted staff on September 9th to withdraw from the proposal. So should the CRA Board determine a preferred ranking of proposals, uh, and authorize staff to enter into negotiations for a sales and purchase agreement, the agreement would be drafted by the city attorney and presented to the CRA Board for review and approval. And the proposed agreement would outline the terms for an agreed sales price, a project timeline, financial ability requirements, and terms for returning the property to the CRA should the project fail to meet the conditions, uh, of the, of the agreement. Staff is available to answer questions at this time.
Thank you, do we have any public comments on this?
I see no, no public comments.
Okay, any questions, uh, from the CRA?
I move to approve the ranking for requests for proposal for the redevelopment of 511 Cleveland Avenue Southwest, and authorize staff to negotiate the top-ranked proposal.
Second.
Um, I have a motion and a second, I, I'm gonna ask for any further discussion, but I am gonna, uh, start a little bit of discussion, I, first of all, I'm, I'm, uh, excited to see that we have four, four bids on this little piece of property in downtown to, to build a new two-story house, uh, so great work on that, um, I, I, I'd just like to, suggest briefly that I know that the timeline hasn't been set, but there's other projects, um, in the area that, uh, the timeline seems to, seems to have been a little too long, so, so, um, I'd like to see the project move, move forward relatively quickly, um, and, uh, and I'm sure that, that staff will be working with a, a reasonably, uh, accelerated timeline, uh, once, once, once we determine, but, but I think, uh, in reality, any of the top three would probably build a pretty nice project there, so, so, uh, thank you for bringing this to us, I do have a motion and a second, anybody else? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0. The CRA meeting is, that, thank you, um, the CRA meeting is now adjourned, and we're gonna return to the City Commission meeting, reconvene the City Commission meeting for items from, I would say the dais, but we're not close to a dais. We're gonna start with, um, Attorney Sobel, and thank her for doing such a great job today, and see if she has anything to say.
Uh, hello, Mayor, hello, Commissioners, Isabella Sobel here, um, in place of Alan Zemmett, happy to be here with you tonight. Happy to be here with you tonight. This is my first city commission meeting. Some of you have seen me at many code enforcement board meetings or planning board meetings, but this is my first commission meeting, so thank you for having me, and thank you for making it so easy on me tonight. I appreciate it.
They're not always this easy.
I'm aware, but no report besides that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Hulk?
I would just like to reiterate the, recognizing the employees of the quarter. Congratulations, and as always, thank you for everything that you do for the City of Largo. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Carroll?
Excuse me?
You got promoted.
I don't, I was, I was on mute, so I got thrown off.
Commissioner Carroll?
Yeah, it threw me off, too. I have nothing tonight, just nice work. Congratulations to the employees of the quarter. Thanks for all the hard work on the budget, and thanks to everybody here. I hope Commissioner Finger feels better soon.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
I would just like to wish everybody a happy Hispanic Heritage Month, and thank Victor and our staff for what they're doing for the Hispanic community, and I look forward to the library putting out their weekly library list readings and stuff like that. So, thank you, Victor, and thank you to our Largo staff, and, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Holmes?
Yeah, our thoughts and prayers go out to the people from New Orleans to Panama City, especially the ones in Pensacola and Mobile, Alabama, because they're getting absolutely beat to death right now with the storm, and they said today that there could be as much as four feet of rain. I mean, that's, that's just hard to believe. Four feet of rain, I mean, my God, it's time to call Noah. But anyway, our best to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Robinson?
I would say fortunately, my daughter is home from school right now, who goes, she goes to school in pencil, so I'm thankful for that, obviously, but I'd like to echo Commissioner Smith's comments and thank you, or thank everybody in our Latinx community here in Largo and the, and the surrounding areas for everything that they do to make this such a wonderful place to live and do all the great things that we do. Just a quick question for Henry, if maybe you could provide an update either tonight or even in our meeting tomorrow would probably be okay, but just a quick update on the Triangle Project there at Bay in Missouri. I know we're looking forward to seeing it done, and I would love to be there for a ribbon cutting sometime in the near future, hopefully, but that's all I had for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you answer that, Mr. Schubert, because I'm gonna tack on to that just a little bit. The only thing that I had was I wanted to get an update on, I talked to the city manager a couple weeks ago, because I had some business folks in downtown ask me about the landscape maintenance. It's been a little bit, well, it's been put on hold during the construction project, and, and we were expecting that to be in the process of being caught up sometime soon. So, if you could give me an update on that, too, and that is all I had, other than to thank the staff and congratulate the library and all the great, I don't know if you all know much about their English as a Second Language Mentor Program, it's amazing what they're doing there. So, so congratulations on your, all your great programming there. Mr. Schubert?
Yes, first of all, the landscaping in downtown, yes, it, it does need a lot of work. Our Public Works Division is, is supposed to be out there beginning the process of rehabilitating what they can, cleaning up the weeds, et cetera. The first thing they had to do was perform a lot of repairs to the irrigation system. It's not uncommon when you have contractors working in an area that one of the sort of first casualties, so to speak, is, is the irrigation system. There were also some plants that died during the construction phase because the irrigation system was, was broken by the contractor, so the contractor will be responsible for replacing that landscaping. Once, once that landscaping's in and we clean up the whole area, we'll do an assessment as to what additional landscaping may be necessary to supplement what's out there, because clearly we've had some, some die over the last few months. On the downtown plaza, the corner or triangle project, that is pretty much done with one outstanding issue. For some reason, Duke is having some issues getting electric power to the corner. So, I haven't had an update in, in, in a couple of days on that, but, but that seems to be the one thing that's holding up the project is energizing the corner. So, I'll, I'll follow up on that and get you, hopefully, a more definitive answer as to when that's gonna finally happen.
Thank you. Just to clarify, you did say, I believe you said Public Works is gonna be working on the landscaping in the downtown, not parks?
I'm sorry, I meant parks.
Okay, good. And not, not that Public Works doesn't do a good job, but the Parks folks take, they make things look prettier.
Absolutely.
Just gonna put that out there. Does anybody have anything else for the, go to the commission? All right, well, have a great evening, and meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.